This meeting of the Cedarburg Board of Education, February 18th, 2015. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg Board of Education and notices have been placed for the district. The copies were also forwarded to the district graphic and we want each of them sent home. Does everyone stand with me? And two questions.
My congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Resolutions and recognitions. Mr. Kennedy will read the first one.
This is the resolution regarding the National School Breakfast Week, official proclamation. Whereas the school breakfast program has served our nation admirably since it was permanently established in 1975, whereas the school breakfast program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the school breakfast program joins and has been joined through the years by many other excellent child nutrition programs, and whereas there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, now therefore Cedarburg School District hereby proclaims the week of March 2nd through 6th, 2015, as National School Breakfast Week and encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthy citizenry for today and future.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Nelson, could you come and read the remainder of the resolutions and recognitions?
Yes. Congratulations to the finalists of the 2014 National Merit Scholarships, seniors Nicky Mo, Jacob Noel, Eric Richardson, and Stuart Strobel. Congratulations to the girls ski team on qualifying for state, which is the first time in team history. Ski members Lauren Enright, Emily Friedel, Anna Ryzinger-Doraya, Dinkowski, Kirit Dinkowski, and Abby Kuborn. State meet just occurred this past weekend, February 15th and 16th at Amoco Cross. Congratulations to the boys swim and dive team as North Shore Conference Champions. Two hundred medley relay of Sam Douglas, Justin Kuznerozic, Jared Nicodem, Will Hobbs, Nick Placinsky, two hundred yard freestyle and five hundred yard freestyle, Jared Nicodem in the two hundred yard IM, Will Hobbs in the fifty yard freestyle, Sam Douglas in the one hundred yard freestyle, two hundred yard freestyle relay of Will Hobbs, Jared Nicodem, Matthew Parker, and Nick Placinsky, and the four hundred yard freestyle relay, Nick Placinsky, Spencer Johnson, Matt Parker, and Sam Douglas. They also just won sectionals this past weekend and they'll compete this coming Saturday in Madison at state. Congratulations to the wrestling team as North Shore Conference Champions. Spencer Lazio, Tucker Hammer, Jason Esparitas, Sam Mayhart, Kyle Pollen, Max Stankey, Tyler Watson, Noah Belshner, Josh Hickey, Jack Omer, Ryder Sigler, Jacob Stone, Turner Daley, Mitchell Heron, Sean Esparitas, Sam Borner, Angelo Conlin, Caleb Drake, Jake Fields, Cody Martinez, Brendan McNerney, Luke Meyer, Jason Miller, Cooper O'Keefe, Ben Reglin, Andy Timmer, and David Zietlow. And they also just won the sectionals for the first time in school history and will wrestle at team state, which is the first time ever. Individual conference champions, one hundred twenty-six pound Colton Ryan, one hundred forty-five pound Max Stankey, one hundred thirty-eight pounds Sean Esparitas, one hundred fifty-two pounds Jason Esparitas, one hundred sixty pounds Tucker Hammer, and two hundred eighty-five pounds Kyle Pollen. Congratulations to the boys hockey team as conference champions. Matt McCoy, Tom Bibby, Drew Decker, T.J. Stork, Jesse Ward, Pete Piccolo, Evan Gabel, Jack Samsi, Brett Benning, Zach Lad, Matt Wolke, Nick Russo, Jacob Timmer, James Fury, Jan Hora, Kyle Samara, Charlie Grapperton, Hunter Nags, Taylor Curtis, Matt Bilzborough, and Daniel Quirk. They're number one seed in the state tournament heading their sectional. Congratulations to the girls Lakeshore Lightning Hockey Team with a thirteen, four, and two record. The Lightning are a seven, number seven seed in the regional WIA bracket, first time playing as a varsity team. So congratulations to Aaron Connolly, Darby McLeish, Sidney Roper, Patty Anderson, Mackenzie Keough, Leah Khan, Haley Brown, Alex Burns, Katie Gedmart, Kate Tenney, Avery Rollander, Hannah Frontier, Hannah Shuby, Megan Watcher, Emily Gabel, Riley Schmider, and Emily Breckenridge.
Thank you, Jeff. Next, we'd like to move on to the consent agenda. Dr. Lamerson?
On the consent agenda, the minutes from the January 20th meeting and the financial reports as well as the personnel report. As our practice, we'll read the personnel report into the record. Conrad, if you read it to me.
Sure. We have no new change in professional employees since the last board meeting, but we did add two support staff, Mayaka Johnson and Rebecca Young, student supervisors at that high school.
Take a motion? Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
I understand.
Motion carries. Mr. Matt, you're standing. All right, we'll move on to six, reports and recognitions. Dr. Lamerson?
As per the packet, I am recommending the Board of Education accept a $200, $600 donation from Michael Brenham Stachey to be used by Cedarburg High School Engineering Club for the robotics program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Next, I recommend the Board of Education accept a $772.77 donation from Webster PTO to be used by Webster Transitional School for the project Lead the Way program.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Third, recommend the Board of Education accept a $10,500 donation from Webster PTO to be used by Webster Transitional School purchases based on school need.
Move to approve?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Next, recommend the Board of Education accept a $1,276 donation from Webster PTO to be used by the eighth grade class for the class gift to us.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Item E on the agenda, recommend the Board of Education accept a $500 grant for Parkview Elementary School as the recipient of Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction High Achieving and High Progress Title I School for 2014-15 school.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Lamerson. Moving on to item M, Aaron, the audit contract.
Each year, our district is required to have an audit performed by independent auditor as associated with the U.S. PNF team. Last week, I'd like to get approval for an additional year with our current auditors, Riley Cannon-Bentham, who have served the district since 2005-6. The increase would be a 1.5% increase over the prior year or a total of $15,800. Any questions?
I would move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
Mr. President, maybe back on, he went over a number of these things in the PNF last week, so. Hold for the board for the whole board at that meeting.
Appreciate that. Item D, Mr. Kennedy, thanks, Dr. Lamerson?
First item, I'd like to ask Todd to review for the board and as well as for the audience of the curriculum cycle that was discussed at every recent curriculum meeting.
Thank you, Jeff. At the February 4th Curriculum Committee of the Board, we had a discussion about the seven-year curriculum cycle, and Rick may give more information during the committee reports, but I wanted to give you a brief overview. So to encourage support and curriculum conversation on curriculum and assessment, we want to move to a more proactive process away from a seven-year curriculum adoption process. Our goal is to move to a cycle that allows for a variety of entry points in the conversation regarding curriculum development and assessment development, but also permitting for a compact process that allows us to achieve those changes in less time, less than a seven-year cycle. I think by doing so, it would encourage greater transparency in our conversation around the curriculum. Right now, the teachers realize that the curriculum's updated at least seven years, and so I'm not certain that we have really a proactive position in allowing or encouraging the teachers to wait to make those kind of changes in the seven-year process. I think by moving to a more proactive process, we'll have a constant conversation around curriculum. It will certainly demonstrate to the teachers that we value the curriculum and we want to have the most current and responsive curriculum assessments possible. It certainly is going to minimize those silent conversations that take place just between teachers. We know there are just good practices going on in the classrooms, but we want those things to be shared, and if they need to be embedded in the curriculum, assessments need to be changed, we want that to be done on a more regular basis than a seven-year basis. And it also gets away from just making forced changes, thinking that if this is the year that we have to make the changes in our seven-year process, we have to make those changes now. They hold on to them until seven years or they can hope what's anticipated this, let's put it in now because we're not going to have another opportunity to make those changes. So we're suggesting that we move to a more compact process and it's just a cycle. And the cycle will allow teachers to enter at any point, and the conversations will be with the departments, with the Curriculum Council, and the suggested changes will be brought forward to the board on an annual basis. So instead of seeing a packet every seven years of, you know, 25 to 50 pages, as those changes are suggested and approved at the Curriculum Council, we would bring them forward to the board to get their approval, and then it'd be implemented the following follow-up. That's the process we want to put into place. We shared this idea consensually with the Curriculum Council, and we're going to bring it back to the Curriculum Council in April to get additional feedback and conversation around it.
If you have any comments or suggestions, please feel free to.
Absolutely. Please. I have one time. When brought back to the board, would it still go through one meeting, two reading, unless the board feels totally comfortable, or do you want to shorten that up for what you're looking for?
That's a great question. I think it's going to determine what's, that will be based on the degree of the change, I think. Some of those are going to be pretty, I think innocuous, if we can say, in the form of this, and others might be, let's consider this and bring it forward. This process, I think, complements the policies that all of you have right now. We're looking at, as you know, revising our policies. Policy 2521, which speaks to curriculum development, and 2210, which speaks to materials adoption. I think aligns very well with this seven-year, you know, moving away from seven-year cycle, just getting to a constant cycle.
And also go to curriculum for a minute, Charles?
Absolutely.
I guess I'd like to add too for the audience that, again, this is something we talked about in the Curriculum Committee meeting in great detail, and there's a lot of question and answer, and it's a lot of consideration we need to do.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's going to allow just a more transparent process and have greater conversation around curriculum. And as we move to materials that are now digitalized and tech books, I think we're going to be in a position where we're going to have to just be more fluid and more frequent in our updates.
I like it. I was just curious how it's going to come out here, so.
Yeah.
I think it's much better to do it annually at the most, because sometimes it might occur more often, especially now that we're converting over Chromebooks and technology into students' hands, we might need to modify it, and every seven years seems awfully long.
Yes. Most of that was governed by just the buddy cycle. We want that got by math and PNA in the same year, so it's fair enough.
Right. I don't think we have to change all the time, but a lot of times when you do make these small changes and then you implement, it brings about the need for another change. And I think this is, this model allows us to be a lot more responsive and will allow us to adjust accordingly if needed. I like this one. I agree.
Ted, can you fill in what I'm missing here? We also looked at it from, we talked about the textbook and the online things. Not only are we going to be able to make changes more smoothly and quicker, but we're going to have to be more vigilant to make sure that we're checking all of those changes and making sure that things aren't slipping in there that we're not noticing. So it was nice to explore that they actually sent out a list of, these are all the changes, so the Curriculum Committee and the Board would get those, these are the changes being made type of things, instead of just us not knowing what the textbooks are like.
Thank you.
Administrative hiring update, again, the Cedarburg PNF, just for the board, summary as well as the audience. Conrad?
Thank you. Both the administrative positions that we have available have been posted. The Westlon Principal position, we also have sent out surveys of parents and staff to get feedback from them as far as things that they're looking for in the next Westlon Principal. People's Services Director position is also posted. We recall we did that one in the fall, and we're not able to secure candidates, so we've timed that one up again. Both postings indicate that we're going to try to coordinate the hiring process with the Hiring Emergency Superintendent, because we do think that that could be a critical piece for the next person coming on board that way. So both of those positions are out there on the weekend and also on state websites, so we're monitoring those and we'll keep monitoring over the next few weeks.
Any questions? Next one, Niola policies.
Niola policies continue to be reviewed. We've been through the 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, and 4,000 series, and those have been made available to board members for review. We've also already embedded those with the Niola representative and the Davis and Keel thought journeys who work with Niola. Just finished up on the 5,000s this week, and Dan and I are continuing with Karen and Todd to look at the 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, and 9,000s. And we'll have a meeting, I think we set for March 10th, with the Niola consultant is coming back to try to get through as many roles on that day as possible. So we're still on track, as we've been shooting for, to try to have the policy approved for next year, ideally. And I know at the PNF meeting, we talked about setting up a meeting potentially for policies to be examined, that one for the discussion by the board or by any other subcommittee.
I peeked in while you guys were doing that, I think a couple of weeks ago, and it looks to be a very tedious and thankless task, and, but you guys are going over it in great detail, and something that needs to be done and cleaned up, so we really appreciate all the work on it.
It's no longer thankless. And the just for the audience, just a reminder to all of us, is the end of summer, is the hopeful outcome in terms of the final adoption. The goal is to adopt the entire policy manual, not a number one, so Niola is recommending that the entire manual be adopted at the same time. And I think we're hoping for a policy committee meeting, maybe late March, really April-ish, and then we'll start that process embedding that through the policy committee and the rest of it.
So if summer comes, like September, October?
You have as much time as you want. I mean, never fast.
From a perspective of somebody who's going through every single policy line by line, we'd like to approve before the next update comes, so I'm not further behind in a whole new generation of policies.
Just like on behalf of the mother tonight.
No, I think, like Chris said, that's a huge task, and I do appreciate that you and the whole team taking the time to go through that. It's a monumental thing to go through, and it's great that you're doing it, and you're farther ahead than I thought you'd be at this stage in game, so that's great.
And then the last item, it's 4K, again, this was discussed at a recent meeting, but just again, to summarize where we're at, as well as what the thing is going, I'd ask PJ to come and share a little snippet of the meeting that we had with Cedarburg Preschool. So PJ, if you wouldn't mind sharing that as a pre-meeting, because we kind of talked about that a little bit at the board level, his interest in our conversation regarding 4K. Again, the timeline is a start date, not next year, not next year, not next year, but the 2016-17 year. That's 4K. So you might just share a snippet and kind of summary of our meeting?
Sure, yeah. This won't even take much, a minute and a half. Last Thursday, Dr. Lamerson and I had the opportunity to meet with Becky McMinniman, who was the director of the Cedarburg Preschool, and two of her teachers to talk a little bit about how they might partner with Cedarburg School District as we move forward with our community-based program, which is the model that we are leaning toward. Becky and her teachers were very interested in partnering with us and are anxious to be able to have continued meetings and more conversations about that. We did share with them our intention to, we jumped to all the existing preschool providers that are currently feeding into the three elementary schools. We'll be doing that a little bit later in the spring, after our exploratory team has had a more chance to sort of crystallize and bring to a bit finer focus what we would like our program to look like. In the meantime, our team will continue to move forward, as I said. We'll be continuing to meet with the DPI and the CISA One consultants that I've been working with for the past several months, and they have every anticipation of being able to launch a program that is in part with the very best 4Ks in the state, in keeping with the fine tradition that our existing schools have, with the findings of almost none. And we'll certainly keep you updated as progress unfolds and we move forward.
And just to tack on to PJ's comment regarding contacting the 4K providers, we, as PJ and I have been, again, the expectation is to do our due diligence, because moving into 4K is a requirement that we provide 4K to anyone in our district that would like to participate in 4K. We don't have the option of saying, sorry, we don't have enough space, classes are full. So in our exploration of the current kindergarten group, our current kindergarten class has 180 students. Seven of those are open enrolled students. We have 173 resident students in the current kindergarten class, okay? Out of that 180 total kindergarten class, they represent 32 preschool K4 programs. Thirty-two.
Wow.
How many didn't go to any preschool?
To the best of our ability, about 20%, we estimate. Now, this is the first time that we have asked for this information in, you know, in earnest way. We had it on the form, but it isn't being blind. So that really surprised both of us in terms of the variety, because one of the things that, as we shared with you, that we're, this is trying to accomplish, is to have a cohesive experience for people as they enter into kindergarten. So we take the wide array of skillset that our kindergarteners have on the first day, and we do our best to allow them to have an experience so that that goes. And so that's one of the four goals, but 32 programs, I will tell you, is a lot of programs.
We had that within the area.
Well, they're in our area, but also when you have open enrollment students and you have folks moving into our community, and these are the schools. Two-thirds of all our kids go to six different programs, and they're the largest ones. Cedarburg Preschool, St. Francis, First Emmanuel, Kindergarten, Early Learning Center, our program, and St. Paul Lutheran. Two-thirds of all of our kids go to those programs. And then the remaining third go to these programs. Crossroads Presbyterian, Grapton Preschool, Jewish Community, Ghanani, Becklon Preschool, Little Red School, Los Angeles, Christie, Maple Leaf Academy, Becklon Preschool, Morning Star Montessori, Cedarburg, Morning Star Jackson, St. Joe's, Jewish Community Center, Milwaukee, Becklon, Montessori, Montessori Children's House, and West Van, M.P.S. 4K, Our Savior, Zionka Childcare, Becklon, Zionka Christian School, Zionka Preschool, Preschool in Tennessee, Rain's Line, Slits, Autobahn, St. John's, Lutheran, Grapton, St. John's, Lutheran, Glendale, Wever, Porter, YMCA, YMCA 4K, and some other ones.
Is that Tennessee open enrollment?
So when, so we talk about, you know, the whole four goal in the conversation, actually, we were referring to Cedarburg Preschool after our last board meeting, approached us and said, can we have a pre-conversation with you, because we're interested in building and participating in a community program? We probably will end up with a blended program, in which some of our students will attend a community-based program, and some will attend a program within our building, or building. And that would be probably an ideal structure, but we were really happy that they were interested. And given the number and the variety of 4K experiences, the other thing that PJ and I discussed was as we unpacked this, one of the things we would love to make sure happens is that we have the opportunity for collaborative professional development with the providers. It may not, you know, it's not the right time, or it's not a good fit for them right now to be in a blended program, a community-based program, but we'd love to have, to the best of our ability, those kind of contacts, so that, again, the goal is that our young people will have the opportunity to have a program that has a lot more consistency than 32 programs might be able to provide. So we'll reach out to all of them, but I wanted to let you know we're working on this. We're doing, and PJ's been awesome, doing painstaking work in terms of just making sure we go about this in a really thoughtful, meaningful way. And again, we're happy about the conversation we've had today, the larger conversation. We do anticipate kind of mid-spring, late spring-ish, when we'll bring, have the invitation to have a more formal conversation. Any questions about, or are we in the process?
I think the 32 really illustrate the wide range, or potential wide range, of what our kids are being taught and the other 20% that, you know, aren't going anywhere, that are perhaps getting even the more robust experiences at home. And then you take all those different kids, and this is just from the board perspective, and we put them into K5, and a lot of the time spent with those K5 teachers is giving them all on one level playing field, so they can go up to the first grade and have a great experience, which they do. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to make that happen a little bit earlier, so we can start those great experiences and those learning experiences more often in the K5 and even K4, which makes everything robust all the way up, so.
The, in our conversation actually with Cedarburg Preschool, we talked a little bit about timing, because they were kind of curious what their timeframe was. We indicated that we'll be diligent, but we are on a timeline, because we do anticipate about this time of year, next year, that we'll be holding an open house. And the goal for that open house, of course, is to allow parents that predictability in the decisions that they need to make that following year. And preschool indicated that that would align perfectly with their typical calendar, so we felt good about that in terms of just being able to, you know, make sure that we don't have any loose ends regarding both communication, but also making sure that parents that might want to take advantage of a blended program or a community-based program, whatever it might be, that they would have enough opportunity to be able to make family plans, which is great. So we're, you know, we're moving along. If you have two questions along the way, just let us know. We just want to bring the brief updates, so that you know the conversations are. Thanks, PJ.
Thank you. At this point, are we, we're not certain that it's going to be blended or a community or a kind of a whole program. We're exploring all the options. There's a lot of work to do.
There's a lot, there's a lot of work to do. In a, you know, community-based program, if no one is willing to partner with you, it's going to be hard to partner. And then the terms of that partnership are important.
Sure.
And so those are, you know, there is a lot of work to do, just to make sure that it works from all sides, and that's what our plan is in earnest.
Thank you. All right, next section is public comment. I know we're going to have some people lined up here, so I'm just going to read a disclaimer real quick, and then if everyone could please come up. "In the past, the State Attorney General issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as school board should conduct the public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist the governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meetings laws. The essence of that guidance is that unless the topic being brought to the board by the public is listed on that meeting's agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have an equal opportunity to participate in discussions with the full school board. We on the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we also take the state's open meeting laws seriously, and will follow the guidance as outlined by the State Attorney General. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between individual friendly public and board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you are encouraged to discuss any issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of meetings." with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of a meeting setting. Please make your comments to the board, and that's any individuals in the audience. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you would expect to have in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. And as a reminder, this meeting is being videotaped and is going to be broadcast on the YouTube channel." So, anyone like to come up?
My name is Sean Cleveland. My address is 3751 Strawberry Glen Drive, Cedarburg, Wisconsin, 53012. I'd like to go ahead and talk about the proposal of moving the Strawberry Glen development from the West Bend School District to the Cedarburg School District. We, this residence thought it was going to be held in, or was part of this school board meeting, but apparently stopped. Since we all came up with the call, I thought I'd come up here and talk about it. Let me give you a little bit of background. I've been a City of Milwaukee employee for the last 13 years. Wife and I rode home there, and as soon as my oldest was old enough, we went ahead and were fortunate enough to get her. Both of my children were old in the half of the school district. So, my wife bore the majority of the burden and had to drive my kids to school each and every day. It took us about 12 minutes or so. It was this great school district. Fast forward till this year. The governor, Walker, went ahead with the residency. Wife and I sold our home and achieved our goal was move out of the country, have a yard big enough for my children to run around and have all the toys. And when we purchased our home, we, I could have swore we read that we had the choice to be at the Cedarburg School District or the West Bend School District. And upon moving in, we found out that, no, it is the West Bend School District. So, my wife and I kind of were concerned, but we hopped online. We looked at all the numbers, and both the school districts are very comparable. The only real difference is we started looking at the distance. And we kind of thought, "Well, this is a bit of a distance for the, the school district, but we'll give it a shot." And I can honestly say, this is our first year in the West Bend School District, and we really don't have any complaints. They really truly have met all of our needs. However, we have found out that that old drive that we had, used to have about 12 minutes, is now 22 minutes, 23 minutes, sometimes longer if there's snow on the road or weather conditions. Driving here today, had the gate over at the middle school not been down, it would have taken us about six and a half minutes to get here. So, as we move forward and we work with the West Bend School District, I want to take the opportunity just to let you know that, you know, as a parent, plan on attending future meetings, and if we can get it passed to the West Bend School District, that we would like to attend your guys' school. I know it's short, or you guys are probably full of students, as you mentioned, I think you had seven open enrollment students. And would you be able to take on a neighborhood? I think we have 44 lots, 41 homes, not all of which have children. But education is incredibly important to us. As I mentioned before, we went ahead and looked at the numbers for both school districts, and both are very comparable. And I truly believe that now that, if West Bend can give our children a quality education, we truly believe the Cedarburg can as well. So, if you give us the opportunity, if you hear from us in the next coming months, take into consideration that we would like to move our development to your school district. If you're not familiar about Cedarburg Development, it's about five or so miles west of Five Corners on County Street, Avenue 60. So, thank you very much for your time.
My name is Kate Shaw. This is my husband, Michael. We live at 593 Benton Way, Cedarburg, Wisconsin, 53012. It is also part of the Strawberry Glen subdivision. We were hoping we were going to be on the agenda for tonight's, but we did realize that West Bend had requested their decision to be made first. But we, like Sean said, we just wanted to let you know how interested we are in moving forward. And a lot of us had moved into the subdivision, you know, loving the countryside lots and, you know, having neighbors but not being right on top of each other. But we also, a lot of us thought that we would be able to get in on open enrollment without issues until people in the neighborhood started applying, and that was no longer the case. So, that's why a large group of us decided we would go ahead with this petition and see if we would be able to just reorganize completely. The, the distance is, is a big factor. It's definitely, you know, Cedarburg is half the, half the mileage to West Bend. So, bus rides makes a big difference. And then, also, your numbers for test scores and whatnot are comparable, but I'm sure you guys are well aware that you are above, far above standard.
We realize where your school is, and we want to give our kids the best education we can. And if I can go and take a step up and there's a knock on West Bend, but the numbers show. So, that's a big portion of it. We'd like to see our kids attend here. And like we said, in the upcoming months. On the flip side, is this all came about really quick, and we were under the impression that you guys could make the decision before West Bend too. We understand that, that that happened. But at the same time, if we have an issue, let's say with West Bend or anything, our appeals time is March 15th. So, that's why we were hoping this coming up, unfortunately, so.
So, we just wanted to, to say hi and, and like you also said, that we're, we're extremely interested in you. We hope you guys give us all the benefits of the doubt and, and hope we can go forward from here. So, thank you for your time.
My name is James. Her call, 3862 Strawberry Glen. Life's pretty simple. It pretty much would equate to about 180 hours on the bus a school year, which is, you're not going to have that seven and a half days. That's a lot of time to lose your kid on the bus during a school year. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Nettisham. I live on 520 Merricourt in Cedarburg subdivision. I was the third house out of 40-something to build there. I've been there for six years. I have three children who attend West Bend School District. I, more importantly, have an 11-year-old in middle school who would find this change very traumatic, to change at that point in time. I understand the distance is, is an issue. I mean, obviously, it is closer. But, you know, when we, when we bought our lot and built our home, we were told it was in the West Bend School District. We knew that. All of these people, I think some people that have bought homes that were resale, maybe on the listing, it listed, you know, from the real estate agent, your choice of schools. But in the paperwork, when you bought a lot from the owner of the subdivision, the company, Newman Companies, wherever it stated was school district we were in. So, my point just being that we knew that when we moved there. So, it's kind of hard for me to accept someone wanting to take my children out of the school that they like and enjoy, and I've had no issues with, so. Just want to let you know that, that not everybody is in favor. Thank you.
My name is Kayla Hawes. I live on Franklin Avenue, West 67, R. 716. And I just have a, I just want to make comment about the 4K that I wrote about in the paper, and that's what brings me here today. So, I was doing a little research. In the Metro parent January issue, there's actually an article that I would recommend, and it's, it's, title is "Home is Where the Smart Is: Adventures in Home Preschool." And a couple key highlights are a lady named Karen Al Peterson. She's a professor and director of Washington State University Vancouver's Child Development Program says preschool education, or it says preschool educators. "For preschoolers, play is more important than academic subjects like reading or math. Play is the cornerstone of preschool. It's the primary way that children under seven process information. Kids retain what they learn if they're having fun." Another, another thing that I would just like to bring up is research proves it's not in the best interest of children to be sent off to school at early ages. It doesn't advance the children's education beyond preschool, and it contributes to severe behavior, psychological, and physical problems. These children need the support, care, love, and direction of parents and others close to them to help them prepare to enter school when they are truly ready to learn and behave. I can give a, a true testimony of this is my husband. He went in a 4K. And his childhood memories of school were very traumatic. He was one of those children that was not ready. However, that's what everybody did at the time. So, his memories are going to school every day, not wanting to, crying. He'd go in the corner and throw up eggs in the corner. He actually showed me the, the school, and it's really sad, you know? You want kids to have a positive introduction, and really, only parents know when their own children are ready. And, you know, this is a growing trend. The effort to provide childcare at taxpayers' expense is being pushed by the president, the US Department of Education, and many in the educational establishment. Several years ago, Washington DC entertained a bill to lower compulsory attendance to H3. This should be shocking, but there are early childhood experts supporting three and younger for mandatory school attendance. So, although the programs would start out as voluntary, two things will happen. First, private schools will dry up. Why pay when you can have it for free? And secondly, it won't be long till attendance is mandatory to get more kids into the program. So, my question is, you know, why does a school need to provide? I guess, what's the ultimate long-term goal in the investment of children's future? Does a school need to be providing and the community be paying for childcare? Isn't that the parent's responsibility?
Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Diana Tarchewski. I live at 555 Benton Way, Cedarburg, Wisconsin. I'm also part of the Strawberry Glen subdivision. And I think the question you asked a lot, why we bought a lot in the, obviously, Washington County in the West Bend School District. And I think for each and every person that bought their lot, it's a completely different decision on why they purchased it. My husband and I had last discussions, and basically, we never once had decided that we would be going to the West Bend School District, basically because of the distance. It is, I couldn't even imagine putting my children on there to drive on a bus unattended. You know, there's no supervision on a bus. So, we decided it would be open enrollment because we were told by our realtor that that was a viable option at the time, and that would be option number one. And then, option number two would be the credit schools. And that's currently, you know, where my children are attending right now, is through credit schools. And if that needs to be the case, then that's where they'll go. But those are our two options. It was never going to be West Bend School District for us due to the distance. So, we would love it if we could come over. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. Thank you, everyone. Move on to committee reports. I know you guys both have spoke on these issues, but curriculum?
We've covered the curriculum cycle. We also discussed the AP World History text, and there'll be a couple more versions of that being circulated. I think the first one is still being circulated. Has anybody, has anybody got it yet?
I was waiting for it. I got it tonight.
We asked if they could possibly get two versions of the other one so that we could circulate them a little bit quicker. We also discussed CPRs. We currently do that in our health program. There's been interest in how we can keep our kids learning CPR but giving more time for them to practice it, to be more proficient at it, which is a great goal to have. So, we've sent that back to our faculty to look at where we could best dip that into our, currently, our freshman student, freshman students doing health. And they'll be getting back to us on ways that we can do that or what it would cost if we needed to buy more equipment to be able to get them.
Do you know what the minimum age is for that? Is it, like, for someone to give CPR, goes a right cross, that say it's the youngest they should earn, or?
Honestly, it's like 10.
10.
It's really young. I mean, I'm not exactly a departmental, but I want to say it's like 10 because I know they do it in boy scouts and girl scouts at that early age.
Maybe one of them started in there earlier.
So, that's, yeah, that's something we're looking at there. We also got to look at the grade school building schedule, which is still being worked on, but some great work being done there. And our next date is April 14th, if anyone's interested in attending.
What's the date?
April 14th at 6:30 is our next curriculum meeting. That's all I have for curriculum.
Thank you. Mr. Bray, personal finance?
It was exciting meeting last week, boss. We went over the beginning of the budget for the upcoming budget process. We have some dates. Probably everyone's seen the emails moving around a little bit with interview processing. We also touched on other items that we talked about tonight, the 4K and the Oola, the hiring update, goals involved with that. I think that's really about it.
Thank you. And the next thing on the agenda is our executive session, where it's anticipated the board will adjourn and close session two, approve executive close session, and it's January 12, 2015. Number two, consider employees' performance evaluation, contract renewal or non-renewal compensation pursuant to statute 19.851D and C of the Wisconsin statutes. And three, to discuss 2014-15 salary negotiations with Cedarburg Education Association. And any associated salary adjustments for Cedarburg School District educators. They will take that motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn and close session.
Second. Put a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming.